Councilmember Sevier.
Present.
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Mayor Durham.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
All present, we have to put on.
All right, with the quorum present, we'll call this meeting to order. This is our regular scheduled meeting for November 9th, 2017. We'll start in a word of prayer and a pledge of allegiance. TR, since you're here with us, will you open us up in a word of prayer?
I'm gonna do that.
Joe Holden, if you feel, may I lead us in the pledge afterwards?
Father, we just thank you, God, for blessing us on such a beautiful, wonderful day today. Lord, we thank you for just life itself. I thank you for these men and women in this room that are in leadership, those who aspire to leadership and in this leadership group today. Father, we just ask for divine wisdom, because that's, without you, Lord, we'll fail and fail miserably. And, God, we just ask for wisdom to be able to make right decisions, to help move our communities and our county forward. God, I ask that you bless this meeting today, and I ask that you bless our efforts today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, gentlemen, in front of you you got the copy of the minutes of the previous meeting, you should have always also received an email of those minutes, if there's no additions, changes, or deletions, I'll hand you a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, and second, any discussion on the minutes? See if none, if you're in favor of approving the minutes, let it be, and have the same "aye." Opposed, minutes are approved. Obviously, we've got a lot of company with us today, good to see everybody here today. If you're in leadership class, you may not want to take notes, but I guess one of the things I'd like to say to leadership class is just realize that, you know, the city of Lawrenceburg and Lawrence County are led by men and women just like yourselves, and so if there's nothing special about us, we just happen to be in this position, so anybody can fill our positions, as long as they have the will and desire to do so. I think it was 2001, Beth, I went through the leadership Lawrence County, or 2002, in those two years, and so.
You graduated now, too?
Yeah, graduated now, too, so it's been a while, but I know what you guys are going through right now, so welcome to council meeting. If you've never been here, this is a public meeting, all of our meetings that we have are public, we're welcome to come anytime, and if you do want to come and talk, TR, if you want to talk, we do give you the opportunity to say whatever you like to say, as long as you keep your language bearable. So, there's, I've got a couple of special guests in the audience today, besides the leadership class. I've got a gentleman here, his name is Herbert McHenry. You guys know Herbert McHenry by chance, he is, we call him Deacon a lot, but he works over at Pondrosa. If you haven't been in Pondrosa and seen this guy, and you're really missing out, he's always got a smiling face, and every morning at 7:30, you'll see him at Crystal, he's having breakfast at Crystal's, and I have breakfast with him all the time, and he's just become a well-beloved friend of mine, and he's, we've talked about these paintings that he does, and he has made several paintings, and he wanted to share those with the council one day, and I said, "Will you bring them down here and share them with the council, we'd love to see them?" And so Herbert is here, they, Herbert, stand up. This is Herbert, this is Deacon Herbert McHenry, he's a good friend of mine, and I guess all the board members probably know Herbert. Herbert, you got some paintings that he's done. Herbert goes to the Greater Tabernacle Church, he's a deacon over there, and it's always good to recognize people in our community who have some talent here. (laughing). (inaudible). 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 So, tell us a little bit about your craft, if you want to, or say whatever you like to say.
Well, get me morning first.
Morning.
Morning.
Like the mayor said, you know, God gave me a blessing, you know, I went to school, for school, and in school, I draw pictures, I do wood burning pictures also, and as I quit school, I said, "I got something to do." My first anniversary, I put a rock head for my wife, Rose, my first anniversary, she said, "What you doing this for?" So, I ran the people, and I draw pictures. So, I went on, kept on drawing, and I, the picture comes to say, "Stop drawing pictures, that's a bad thing." So, I started from here, and I just kept on doing, drawing pictures, everywhere I go, I leave a trademark, give somebody something, and, you know, like the mayor said, "You want pictures?" So, I had to pick his own pictures, and I know I give all y'all something, I can't (laughing). So, you know, I just thank y'all for inviting me to come down, and I guess I'm not ashamed. I've heard a couple of hundred of those that are cooked, you know, they had 17 years on my job, they hated seeing me leave, but actually I had to leave, my time at John's, I'm 72 years old, still looking, you know, God, it's bad meat to work, and one thing I would ask y'all to do for me, one thing, I asked y'all to pray for my great grand daughter, she lost her uncle to the special, and so I asked y'all to pray for her, and I think the mayor's for inviting me to come down, I see, and I'm gonna tell y'all a secret, the mayor, I said he'd leave all his ass, said, "Tell us that doctor's pain." (laughing). That's what I had to say, I had to say, "Thank y'all for inviting me to come," is that what I want to know? I got a call written, he's getting tested to Crystal, Pondrosa, I believe, I can't do no portraits yet, I'm working on that now.
Working on the portraits. So, if you want to get better acquainted with Herbert, you need to go to Crystal, you'll be there in the morning.
Every morning.
(laughing).
So, you gotta eat, and you're never late for work, he walks from Crystal over to Pondrosa every day, so, so he's been for a long time. Well, thank you for bringing these, we'll leave them on display here for, you're gonna be with us for a while, so we'll leave these on display out here.
Mayor, let's do a picture of Ralph, I didn't hold him, why don't we got him up here, okay?
Sure.
Here, pick up. Mayor, you're getting what you're afraid.
(inaudible).
Mayor, get one, get, don't get it, he's holding one, too. Ain't that heavy, man, you hold one. Take me this way, I'll go this way. Oh, okay, yeah, you're waiting, babe. Okay. Okay, you like that better?
I like that.
Okay. Okay. (inaudible). 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 Okay, looking a little bit, two more, okay? How about one more, you know, that's good, all right. Okay.
We'll leave right here, so, yeah, enjoy right now.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you, Deacon.
Good job. (inaudible). So, we have some special recognition today, Mr. Betts, you want to take the lead on that? Turn the table over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. If Jerry Smith and Jeff Purcell, Kurt Watson and Jeff Clifton, you guys have come on up here, Doug, this is Mr. Doug Howe, he is the president of Lawrenceburg Bay Ruth League and facilities chairman of the World Series Committee, and sometimes we don't say thank you enough, but the, just wanted to give these guys some recognition for making our ballpark the finest in the country.
Yeah.
No question about it, Jeff and Kurt, Jerry Smith and Jeff Purcell, I can't imagine how much time you guys spent up there, getting everything ready for the ballpark, I mean, for the World Series, and we just wanted to do a presentation to you today, and it needs to come from Doug, because he's the one that told you what you needed to do.
And each one of you, Scotty McGregor signed baseballs, and guys, just a small appreciation for, I know, I never had, you know, any problems, any questions, I mean, you guys always came, we coordinated together, it's just wonderful, I mean, what we asked for, you guys somehow made it out, you know, you guys poured your heart into that up there, and I mean, and it shows, I mean, that field is just something that this city's proud of, and that also came from this council and people throughout this city that helped give money to this thing, and, but the grunt works, standing right here, you know, and there's a lot of other guys that also were part of it, but you guys made it happen, and every day, you know, summer sun, hot rain, we pulled them tarps on and off, everything else, but, you know, I never questioned that it would get done, and just can't thank you guys enough for what you did. Jerry, for the way you led these guys and led a lot of this stuff that went on up there, you know, you just don't understand what it means, and what it means for the future of Lawrenceburg baseball, Bay Ruth baseball, okay? And just want you guys to know how much we appreciate you, really, really do, and good to know you guys signed baseball here, and thank you so much, and got a plaque from here, I think it's, yeah. (applause). Thank you. (inaudible).
As long as I don't have to throw it out.
All right, again, if one of you also a pin, the Bay Ruth pins as well, one of those, and again, I wish you guys would also let the folks know that work with us as well, you know, how much we appreciate everything they do. (inaudible).
Too. I told the mayor last night that City Hall's got enough plaques, and this needs to go in Jerry's office, this one does.
All right, and this is, says, presented to the city of Lawrenceburg, Tennessee, in appreciation for your support of the 2015 and 2017, 13 through 15 World Series, Lawrenceburg, Tennessee, and guys, you know, we had so many, Jerry, you will take that, put that up in your office, and like I said, we had a lot of compliments, I can't tell you another number of compliments, not only from Bay Ruth officials, but every coach that come in here. It was funny, guys, if y'all would have been there the first day, I think it was the team from Connecticut, I guess it was, up that way, and they wanted to come look at the field, and they all came out and looked at the field, and they said, "Oh, y'all, we're playing on turf." That's grass, it can't be grass, and they literally got on their hands and started pulling grass up out of the thing to make sure it was grass, they just, they've never seen a field that flush, and that's the kind of compliments that we got, guys, and we appreciate it so much, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to present this, and you guys as well, but like I said, this is a county, as well as a city, supported thing that we had, and it's been an honor, and just look forward to the future. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. (inaudible). Get to on this side of it, get to on this side.
Okay, be fine. Go ahead and do that, let me get y'all right fast, okay? Don't cuddle a little bit, you don't have too much breakfast or something, all right? Okay.
(inaudible). We don't miss meetings.
All right, we're gonna do about two more here, okay? Show business is rough, man.
Very, 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 very.
(inaudible).
Okay, you got it, okay.
Get back up.
Here you go.
Here you go, that's.
He got it, he got it.
Oh, he got it, okay.
He got it.
Yo's awesome, man.
Thank you, guys.
I just want to say this, if it wasn't for the city council, Alan Betts, Doug Howe, Bay Ruth, you wouldn't have the facilities that we got up here, but I'm telling you folks, we got something up here at Bay Ruth that colleges don't have.
True.
I mean, there's colleges that wish they had a facility like Bay Ruth, Cal Ripken's fixing to be the same way, you know, we're in phase two of Cal Ripken's, when we get through with it, it's gonna be a top facility, but these two guys over here, Kurt Watson, guys, I'm telling you, I'll put him up against any turf man in the state of Tennessee, because he knows turf, and Purcell, he's a go-getter.
You better stop while you're here.
Yeah, just (laughing). But like I said, the city, they've invested in this, and they have poured their heart out to make Lawrence County baseball great, and we need to continue to keep that moving going.
The whole complex is great.
Yeah.
And that's what our goal is up here at the board, is our sporting complex up there, we want it second to none, so that when we bring somebody in to take a look at Lawrenceburg and Lawrence County, that's one of the highlights, that they know they can, their children will have a great time up there at the sports complex.
But Al and Doug, they won't, they keep making improvements, you know, if we got something we'd like to see happen, we go to, you know, they're great to work with us. Chad and the Cal Ripken Board, same way, you know, they, very seldom that we ever get told no, they like to work with us, and so, you know, thank you guys, thank y'all very much for what you did.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I already told Alan this a while back, but I got, I was talking to one of the, was it California, was it, parents from one of the players' California team, and they wanted to tell me that evidently their team was a travel team or something, and they said, "We play all over, go all over the United States, different tournaments and whatnot," says, "This is the best complex and setup that we've ever been to." They like the fact that the fields are kind of back-to-back, and the concession stands that we built, and the restrooms, and so, I took great pride in that from my guys over here, to take so much pride in their work, so I thank you very much, and we're gonna keep it going, that's what. And I'd like to say one thing, too, I thought, this was two years ago, this wasn't at the World Series, but this was at the state tournament, there was a team there from Johnson City, now, how big of a town is Johnson City, 60,000, 65,000? The coach from Johnson City told me, he said, "We have never, never played on a field that's this nice in Johnson City," so, you know, the word's out about what Lawrenceburg is at, and what you guys do to it, so, I just want to pass that along also.
Mayor, in case you didn't notice, Jeff is the official spokesman for the (inaudible).
I was gonna ask him. He's good at talking.
He's a good salesman, the guys do a good job up there, and it's up there that they sing.
We'd like to hang around, but we got work to do.
(laughing). There you go.
(applause). Beth, since you guys are with us today, you want to recognize leadership, leadership class, and new staff of leadership class?
Well, thank you, Mayor, thank you for having us today, most of our class members are here, we got a couple that had work issues that couldn't be with us today, but we appreciate you having us, we really appreciate Lawrenceburg continuing to support the program, and realizing how important it is, and we've got a really good class this year, I'm real proud of them, they, they're very interested in what's going on in the city and in Lawrence County.
Well, I see some familiar faces, but some folks I don't know, can you go around and let them stand up and say their names?
Absolutely, and I guess we'll just start with Junie.
I am Junie Golden, I'm on behalf of the Quanis Club in the Lawrence County Settlement District, I'm a student.
I'm Deanna Fox, um, Todd Fox is my husband.
I'm sorry I didn't recognize you.
Yeah. (laughing). I work at a hardware plant, or a whole plant.
I knew that.
I'm Tammy Lissa, I'm a practitioner of Big Think District, and I also substitute teach.
I'm Jason Kelly, and I work at First Farmers.
I'm Kayla Donaldson, and I'm a state farm agent here.
Joe Holden, Quick Mark, Edward Zoll, whatever you wanna call them.
Sierra Beckman, I work for the city of Loretto.
Alan Boss, Southern Tennessee Regional Health System, Lawrenceburg.
Andy Spearman, I work with Community Bank, we're in office at the bank in Wayne'sboro.
I'm Mary Hickerson, and I'm also Community Bank of Lawrence County.
I'm TR Williams, I'm thinking about getting into leadership. (laughing). I'd be good on there.
John Ferguson, I work with B&amp;K Properties.
Gary Daniels, I was director of manufacturing for Bertini, now retired.
Lee Boyd, Lawrenceburg Utility Systems.
Jim Flaman, Flaman Carriers.
Cody Dos, master electrician at Dos Brothers Construction.
I'm Justin Hope, Dos Brothers.
All right, gentlemen, our next meeting is scheduled on Thanksgiving Day, so obviously that's gonna be a conflict for me, and probably most everybody here, so I would like to entertain the idea of having our meeting pushed up today to the 22nd, Wednesday the 22nd, if you guys are in favor of that, I'll entertain a motion in that direction.
Certainly.
If you have a motion in the second, any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of moving our regular scheduled meeting from November 23rd to November 22nd, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Folks, and it's approved, and we'll have our meeting on the 22nd, if you're with that, if they know, and we'll be good. Chris, we'll come to your portion of the meeting, and I think we do want to do the grants thing, if you're prepared to do that, the department head, if you're prepared to do that today, would you get the grant?
Yes, yes. Okay, just have two quick announcements, I'd like to recognize a couple of employees. First, Linda Adair for being recognized by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, she has earned the designation of Master Municipal Clerk, that's a prestigious title in that field, so glad that she was able to earn that recognition, also like to welcome our new firemen, Dwayne Bradley and Justin Bullock, they're our newest hires to the Fire Department, please, starting here in the near future. Got a department head meeting, our department manager report this morning, Joe Baxter, Wilson upgrade, update on the grants.
Good morning, gentlemen, as you know.
I'm glad it's not gonna be long, you got it on the post-it.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I just gotta hit the phone, you know, as you know, we've been on the long road of, in chasing some TDOT dollars to get some much-needed improvements in Lawrenceburg, and we're actually getting down that road far enough that we can expect to see some actual action in the near future. We have three projects currently in the queue, the one that we're closest to is the Safe Route to Schools project, that's a 3,400-foot sidewalk that will go from Ainger South School and down the west side of Weekly Creek Road, down towards the Spring and Road intersection. The design has been submitted by Griggs and Maloney to TDOT for review, that's where it is now, they'll tinker with it, whatever, we expect to bid that this spring, and then start construction right after school's out, obviously, and we wouldn't want to do it when school is in session, so that's the plan right there, the construction part of that project's about $197,000, the other part is, there's some other money in there for engineering, but it's a 100% grant, and I think we do have a budget amendment on the agenda today to give us a vehicle to actually write checks and spend on that money, because we're starting to make some invoices on that. The other project we also hope to be going this summer is, of course, the downtown revitalization project with the square, they are working on the design for it now, we've had lots of meetings and looked at a lot of things, there's, it will be the same basic footprint that we have, but there are ADA additions, and some of the planners will be changed, and we are trying to preserve some of the ornamental trees and things we have on the square, but we also, you know, very hopeful we will also be doing that project this coming year, get through the bidding process and getting a TDOT approval for that, so, that project is, it started off as about $569,000, but it got amended up to add additional Americans for Disabilities Act improvements on it, so I think it's about $800,000, it's an 80-20 grant, they only paid for construction, too, so the engineering and everything on that is on us, and the other project of trying to get going, been in contact with TDOT lately, it's for the, it's for the circus transportation program funds, and it's for widening of Weekly Creek Road from North Locust to Spring Road, and also putting a sidewalk on one side of the road, and we've also, just like last week, got the numbers in to add some drainage improvements to maybe cross Weekly Creek Road, so we can help some of that flooding that's going on, but behind Old North Military, behind Hardee's in that area back in there, and we did have to get the road reclassified, so they could work on it, but that was approved last week, we're waiting on a contract from TDOT, it's also an 80-20 grant, and they'll want to downpay them to start the engineering process, these projects typically take a while to get done, the last one I did for the crossing down at Sugar and Spice Market, it took seven years, so I'm hoping it will be much quicker than that, but, you know, some, some, one guy just laughed and said, "Well, you're lucky, seven years," he said, "Sometimes it takes 11," but I'm hoping we can push that up, maybe we'll have a little help to get that a little quicker, because it's widening Weekly Creek Road, it's just not that complicated a process like some of the other stuff.
Thank you for that, Jeff, appreciate it. Rich, you got any more business?
That's all I have.
Okay, we'll let the minutes show that we have AUS financials on record here for September of 2017, I don't have any old business before us, we go to the new and legal business, Mr. Betts, I'll turn the table over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, ordinance 1214, and ordinance to amend ordinance 1207 entitled Budget Appropriations of Revenues and Expenditures for the 1718 fiscal year for the city of Lawrenceburg, Tennessee, this is to include funds from the sale of seizure vehicles, 265, to the budget for second final reading.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve, second, any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of ordinance number 1214, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and ordinance number 1214 is approved.
Ordinance 1215, and ordinance to amend 1207 entitled Budget Appropriations of Revenue and Expenditures for the 1718 fiscal year of the city of Lawrenceburg, this is to add $240,000 funds for the Safe Routes to School grant, that is for second final reading today.
Put your pleasure on this gentleman. Hold it, you'll prove. I got a motion to approve. Second, any discussion on this?
Joe, you just mentioned $197,000 for this, and this is 240.
The 197 is just the construction, the rest of it's engineering, that's the public education, but also 100% (inaudible), whole grant, counting all the different things they teach the kids about half across the range.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion, if you're in favor of ordinance number 1215, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and ordinance number 1215 is approved.
Ordinance 1216, and ordinance to amend ordinance 1207 entitled Budget Appropriations of Revenue and Expenditures for the 1718 fiscal year for the city of Lawrenceburg, general fund, this is to add $392.04 reimbursement for out-of-town expenses for the planning and development, that's for your second final reading today.
Motion to approve. We got a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of ordinance number 1216, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and ordinance is approved.
Ordinance 1218, and ordinance to amend ordinance 1207 entitled Budget Appropriations of Revenue and Expenditures for the 1718 fiscal year for the city of Lawrenceburg, this is to add $240,000 funds for the Safe Routes to School grant, that is for second This is to include funds in the amount of fifty-thousand dollars for the theater grant, and that is for second final reading.
Motion to approve. I got a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of ordinance number twelve eighteen, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and ordinance number twelve eighteen is approved.
Next resolution, authorizing city of Lawrenceburg to enter into a contract grant agreement with the state Tennessee Department of Military, Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, tracking number thirty-four one oh one oh five seven eighteen, begin date ten one sixteen, end date six thirty twenty eighteen. This is the grant dealing with the EMA salary reimbursement from the state, and that's for your consideration today.
Motion to approve. I got a motion to approve. Second, any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of this resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the resolution is approved.
Next resolution, the board of mayor and council of the city of Lawrenceburg, authorizing the city of Lawrenceburg to enter into an agreement for the sale of real estate to Locust Avenue Holdings LLC, and authorizing execution of the deed or deeds to complete the transaction. This is a Lawrenceburg utility system transaction. The property is located at eleven sixteen North Locust Avenue. Sales price is five-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars. The power, I mean, the utility board has already approved it, but since the city of Lawrenceburg is the actual owner of the property, we also have to approve it. So, that's for your consideration today.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I got a motion to approve. Second, any discussion on this? So, did I ask for discussion on that today? You got any questions? I always think of the wrong property, I'm like, man, that's high.
Get all you can get.
There you go. All right, so if you're in favor of this resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that resolution is approved.
That's all my business today, Mr. Mayor.
Council, do you skip over twenty seventeen for the purpose?
Yes.
Yes, sir, it's, the public hearing has not.
That's the twenty-second.
Is twenty-second on that, so that's why we checked over, skipped over that.
Can I ask a question? Is there a need to even, I know we were doing that because we're looking at selling some properties, is there a need to even amend that at this point for towers? If we're not gonna do anything with the property, or do we still need to put that place?
Yeah, this, this, going forward, it'll help out.
Gotcha.
So, just for the purposes of leadership that's here, we went through those ordinances pretty quick. We have work sessions every once in a while. We'll work through all the people, everything's behind the scenes. And basically, when it gets to this table, it's about a four-minute to vote on it, so that's why everyone spends a lot of time on it. But sometimes there's a question, too, that gets brought up.
Plus, Joyce emails all this three, four days ahead of time, where we have time to study over it. Thank you, Joyce.
Motion to adjourn. I got a motion to adjourn. Second, this meeting will stand adjourned.